The City of Southfield Special Meeting conducted as a regular meeting of the Planning Commission for February 6, 2019 at 6:30 is now called to order. Would you please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
If I may, if we could do the roll call first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm a bit too fast. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Culpepper.
Present.
Dr. Denson.
Present.
Mr. Griffiths.
Here.
Mr. Huntington.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Mia is excused this evening. Mr. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
I would move for approval of agenda for February 6, 2019 meeting.
Support.
With the motion by Commissioner Willis, supported by Commissioner Huntington, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, agenda approved. Mr. Crowde, Mr. Do you have an announcement?
Not at this time.
Good evening, I have one. Good evening to the viewing community and to our residents. The Southfield Planning Commission is a several member of committed, dedicated board members appointed by the mayor with approval by the city council that acts as an advisory capacity to the council to make recommendations on text amendments to the Southfield zoning ordinance, rezoning results, request, special land use, site plan review, and the Southfield Master Plan, also the capital improvement plan. All study meetings and the regular meetings are open to the public in accordance with the Open Meeting Act PA 267 of 1976. Are held on Wednesday evening at 6:30 PM. Meetings are posted that Friday evening before the next meeting on that Wednesday are available for viewing at the southfieldcity.com. And copies of the plan, text amendments, master plan, and capital improvement plans are available for viewing at the Planning Department's office, and current projects can be reviewed using our online interactive tool of Planning Department's homepage. The Planning Department can be contacted at (248) 796-4151 with any questions or concerns Monday through Friday. I hope this gives the audience and the viewers a basic idea of some of the things the Planning Department does. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, our main number is 4150.
Okay, sorry, correction on that, (248) 796-4150.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, Mr. Crowde or Spence?
Yes, so we have no public hearings this evening, however, we do have one site plan.
Right.
So before you this evening PSP 18, excuse me, dash 0013. This is a site planner view request of Keith Russo, the Collaborative on behalf of the owner Lawrence Technological University for Phase 3 of the LTU Stadium Development Plan to include permanent seating with press box, concessions, lockers, restrooms, pedestrian walkway, ticket booth, and property located 21000 West Ten Mile Road in the City of Southfield. If you recall, at the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, we did bring this to you at your study meeting, there were a couple of things that were discussed. One of those things mainly being a pathway that was being proposed to get from the area of parking to the stadium itself. If recall, the petitioner was noting that that would be called chip sand, and since that time, they've kind of taken your concerns under their wings and have actually made that path now asphalt.
Oh, great.
Instead of the chip sand. So it'd be a pathway that would be much more firm, much more traditional than what was being proposed. From the standpoint of the plans itself, from a proposal standpoint, just for you and then for the public who is viewing, this particular location, Lawrence Tech, is on the corner of Ten Mile Northwestern Highway. This particular image indicates what the current field looks like. There's a small parking lot as well as a pedestrian pathway that leads to the field itself. There are some temporary bleachers that are currently there. Those were installed before the beginning of the football season in 2018. Site ERO, Education Research Office. And from this point on, I'm going to turn this over to the petitioner themselves. This is their presentation, so I would like to turn it over to them so they can explain the project. It is Phase 3, but you will note that it's a Phase 3A and a Phase 3B.
Yes.
So I'll allow them to explain the difference between those two.
Good afternoon. Would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Kevin Finn, Dean of Students at Lawrence Technological University, 21,000 West Ten Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, (48075).
I'm Peter Rieke with the Collaborative, or 206 South Main in our.
Thank you. Okay, so we'd like to walk you through our field. Our goal was last year, we did have those temporary bleachers, and with our field, we have a more grand design. It'll be better for our student athletes and also our people that are coming to cheer them on. There was, you know, temporary bleachers were not ideal. With anything on our campuses we build, it's we, with sporting stuff, we do it through philanthropy, so as people are able to give us money, that really determines what we're able to do. So we're happy we have some money to start that. So, walk you through it. Eventually, this is going to be what it's going to look like at Northwestern and Ten Mile with a stadium that would provide seating for 4,000 fans, but that's not, that's the full vision. It's not what we're going to get completed or hope to complete this summer. But what you see with that is a home side that would seat 3,000, a visitor's side of 1,000, and then a building that would be for our coaches, also weight rooms, and stuff for like a Hall of Fame and stuff like that for people who come back and see some of the players that have, student athletes that have done some great things there. What we are focusing on right now is Phase 3. So we are focusing on the main grandstand for the home team, the entry of the fans to the field, and then also entry from the pathway that we're working with the city on. That's going to be the pedestrian pathway along Northwestern as well. So two different points of entry into the field where traditionally we had one. So that looks at seating for 3,000. It also is looking at a press box that is two-story, and then places for ticket booths, concessions. Everyone likes to get a Coca-Cola or a hot dog at the games. Restrooms, locker rooms, and then revised perimeter fencing would be needed as well. So one of the things that comes up each time when we look at having that many people on the field is parking, and I know some of you had a chance to get out to a game this year, and we appreciate that. We use our parking lot for our campus because on Saturdays, there's not really classes on Saturday. There's a few, but not many, and students like to tailgate as well as parents, so we used our existing parking lots. And then people could either walk to the field, or we provided transportation. We provided transportation in two ways, just regular vans that would pick people up, but we also had a van that was there for people that maybe have to use a wheelchair, so that would be easy for them to get on and off. Obviously, we have a lot of grandparents that come back for these games, and we love having them there, so we want to make it as convenient as possible. And those run throughout the game, an hour and a half before the game starts, and an hour after the game to get people back and forth. Majority of the fans did walk because we didn't have any rainy games this year. That might change when we have games of rain, but the people who needed to use the vans and stuff, it was available for them. And then this is a current count of our parking, so you could see what is available for cars on our campus, and we show still a surplus so that we can meet the demand of one big game on campus. I think our best test was last year for our first game of the season, we had a little bit over 4,000, and that's, you know, we're not expecting that capacity with the new stadium that we're building yet, so we were able to even meet that that day with our Additional things about path to field you see now, we're adding that path that will be a part of the pedestrian walkway that goes along Northwestern there. We're excited about that. Additionally, we do use the help of Southfield Police and our campus safety on that day, they coordinate to make sure that the traffic flow is fine and to respond if there are any incidents, obviously. So this is what we are working to address this summer and want to get into place before the season starts. Permanent seating for 2,150 on the home side, and then some temporary self-seating for 552. So with the amount of money we have able to spend, we can build 2,100 of that 3,000 right now bleacher set, and then the other 500 would be temporary bleachers in the south end zone. Actually works out well for us because when you have high schools, you want to celebrate, you want to separate the home and the visiting team. We do have high schools that use it on Fridays. Not as big of a deal with colleges, but it is a big deal with high schools. We will be using our existing temporary box, press box right now. That two-story press box is what we're going to be working towards, but it is again about funds. We have a temporary press box that we'll use this year, and then we're working on a ticket booth, concession stand, and spirit store for everybody's, you know, needs there. We're working on the foundations, though, for the below bleachers in the building, so the way the bleachers are being built, eventually there will be a locker room underneath there, restrooms, as well as places for like the referees and stuff. We're going to build the foundations for that, so when the season is done, hopefully we have more funds in place, we can continue that building. The paved pathway to the stadium will be completed, and as we said, we took your feedback. That's going to be asphalt now, not the chip sand. We're going to use, we got approval about maybe two weeks ago, to use our temporary trailers for another year. I'm hopeful that it's all it is. We want a better situation for everybody on campus, so we're working on that fundraising to get that locker room done, and then revised perimeter fencing. The next Phase 3B would be getting a full seating up to 3,000. Temporary bleachers would be removed. We'd have that new story, two-story press box. The restrooms, the locker rooms would be complete. Permanent concrete walkways to stadium. No longer needed trailers. Revised perimeter fencing again, and any ornamental fencing that we need to do too. In fact, we have a really nice ornamental fencing that we think shown in a later image here. So this is again just the idea of the bleachers, what you would see kind of underneath them with the locker room spaces, the restrooms, and then the spaces for like officials on game day. Really important in our development, we do see like in certain sports like lacrosse and so on, we'll be able to host national championships, bring teams here from around the country, quite frankly, with the hotel locations there, it's just perfect. So this is kind of a look at what it'll look like this year. So you'll see there's a combination of bleachers and then also seats. You see where the temporary press box goes there, up there on the platform that we're building. They're elevated seats this year, so you'll get a better view of the game. Football players are big, they're hard to see over, so you want elevated seating. Then eventually, as we get to the final phase of 3B, you see that's that two-story press box we're building. Provides suites for our president with donors and special people, but it also provides for camera angles, things like that when you host tournaments that are important, different coaches, recruiters, and stuff that comes to these type of games. Again, this is, we're looking now at the ticketing concessions. You see what that view would be like. Then you see how it looks at the ornamental fencing. We'd like to put a nice college look to it. We think it's going to be really nice when we get to that next phase of this. So there's a conceptual schedule. That ends our presentation.
And if I could, through the chair, commission will be making recommendation on all of Phase 3, even though it'll be built in phases.
Yeah, understand. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions, concerns? Commissioner Huntington?
Okay, through the chair. So what other activities do you expect to have in the stadium this year?
So we play football, obviously. Our men's and women's soccer team also plays there, and then in the springtime, it's our lacrosse teams, and then there are practices throughout the year of our teams. We know that Southfield Christian High School last year played their home games there, so that was on Friday nights, about four games they had there last year. Brother Rice has, wanting to play their home games on Friday night, four games. After that, our students do play some intermurals out there when our teams aren't practicing, but like you'll see from like November, our last game next year is November 16th. You really won't see use of that field from like November 16th through like March 1st unless we have a very warm winter, then the teams might go out there earlier to practice. They're all practicing in domes right now, because as we know, it's up and down the weather. But about March, that's when our lacrosse teams will take that field and start playing. Their season ends in May. Activity you'll see in the summertime is typically practices and sometimes some camps, like our coaches do camps as a community, so like six through like all the way up to high school, it's a way that players get evaluated for college scholarships, or just to continue to learn their craft and have a little bit of fun and burn some calories.
Okay. So you don't foresee any concerts or anything like that in the summertime?
No, no. We do, we do hope to do, because we do have a nice scoreboard, is to have a community event once this is done, where like a sit in the field, watch a movie, but no, not concerts.
Okay. One more question. Does your plan allow for any expansion at all if necessary? Let's say this team is just so great.
The full vision we saw, I don't, at our level, I don't see us getting bigger than that. You know, at the NIA, that is a nice sized stadium for an NIA school. If we were, and I just don't think it would be in my lifetime, if we were to go to NCAA Division 1, and now we're competing against the Michigan and Michigan State, that's the only reason we would need to expand it. I don't see us ever doing that, but you never say never, right?
Right.
No, that's, that should take care of us for a long time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
I know this, well, during your conversation, you mentioned alumni, seniors coming to the game. I don't notice any handrails going up any of the stairways. Do you think that that's something that would be necessary for?
Yeah, it's just a conceptual rendering right now, so in the actual drawings, there will be, handrails and everything will be up to code and what it needs to be.
Okay, let me say this, as I said in our study meeting, great job. This is a, an added attraction that every year seems that LTU outdoes itself, and this is a big part of it. Having that field the way it is now is okay, but you're planning for the future, because the way this field looks now, you're going to get invitations to have state tournaments there, have, play teams are going to play to come in to use that field, that facility, because it's great. And having that flow that's on that expressway, people looking over seeing it, is a great. Commissioner Willis and I was just talking, it has that stadium environment almost like Wayne State.
Yeah.
You know, Wayne State's field sits back and you can see it. So kudos to you and to the staff over there. I think it's great. It looks good, and as you know, I've been to quite a few games, and you guys continue to outdo yourself. The tailgating is really picking up.
It is.
And I guess that may be because you give we a lot of free stuff.
Exactly. Nothing beats free food.
Yeah, you do give a lot of free stuff, but I enjoy it, and I think that's an asset, and it really beautifies that area, so I'm with it 100%, and I hope everything goes forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Griffiths?
I just, I think this project's progressing nicely. It's realistic phases, and you're doing what you say, and you're doing a nice job with everything, but I appreciate the way you break it down into phases, understand the fundraising aspect of it, and every time you said you're going to do something, you've done it already, and it's getting nicer and nicer as we go. So I can't wait to see the full vision come together. Also, I'm just excited about this continuation of the path along Northwestern Highway and the collaboration between the City of Southfield and Lawrence Tech University. I think it's, that's going to be great. I'm going to use that personally.
It's funny, because you know, I see your students already biking again this week, and today was a little bit of a stop that, but I'm sure the rowing gets back up to 50 for a day. We'll see bikes being used again, and they're going to like that pathway, obviously.
Great job. Anything else, Commissioner? Thank you. Jeff, do you have a recommendation for us? Mr. Spence?
Yes, I do have a recommendation for you. So with regard to PSP 18 dash 0013, the Planning Commission recommends favorable recommendation for the site planner view request of Keith Russo, the Collaborative on behalf of the owner, Lawrence Technological University, for Phase 3 of the LTU Athletic Field Development to include permanent seating with press box, concessions, lockers, restrooms, pedestrian walkway, and ticket booth with the following conditions. Landscaping shall be installed in accordance with approved landscape plan. Petitioners provide sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Petitioners execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas, both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of any stormwater detention system. Petitioners implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Approval of the site plan and/or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the Building Department for any proposed sign. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent property. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.29, Paragraph 12. Site shall be designed and developed to contain public works of art in accordance with Section 5.22-5 Public Art, Article 4 General Requirements of the Zoning Ordinance, unless exempted based on written stipulation. Sports field lighting shall only be used during athletic or school-sponsored events. Chain link fencing shall be black vinyl coated. Event parking shall be limited to parking lots, and no parking shall be allowed on the grass. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the recommendations from the Planning Department. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Willis?
I would move for favorable approval of PSP 18 dash 0013.
Support. The motion by Commissioner Willis, supported by Commissioner Huntington, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Fine, pass. Thank you. Good luck, and again, thank you for all your effort and support. Good luck.
And gentlemen, we'll see you Monday night.
Monday night.
Council Study Session. Thank you.
Okay. We have two sets of minutes to approve. May I have approval? A motion, please, for the minutes. Commissioner Martin?
Motion to approve the minutes of December 8th, I'm sorry, December 5th, 2018 study meeting and the December 19th, 2018 regular meeting.
Support.
The motion by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Griffiths, that December 5th and December 19th study meeting and regular meeting be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Next, Jeff, we have the approval of Planning Commission meeting scheduled for February 2019.
Yeah, correct. You've gotten this schedule a couple of times. This is a schedule that takes into account any holidays that might come up that might conflict with a Wednesday night, but this is the calendar that the Planning Department has put together and would like to keep for the rest of 2019 into January 2020.
Okay. Did we have time to look at the schedule? May I have approval, please? Commissioner Huntington?
I'd like to approve the Planning Commission meeting schedule for February 2019 to January 2020.
Support.
The motion by Commissioner Huntington, supported by Commissioner Willis, that the Planning Commission meeting schedule for January 2019 through 2020 be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, approved. We have in front of us also, Terry talked about it before, the approval of Planning Commission Annual Report that we looked at, the things that we've done and added. So we've had a chance to look at it. Anything we need to change or look at other than to get an approval, yeah? Okay, you had a chance to look at, may I have approval for the Planning Commission Annual Report that will be given out to the, to the, to the commission, please?
Motion for the approval of Planning Commission Annual Report for 2018.
Support.
The motion by Commissioner Willis, supported by Commissioner Martin, that our annual Planning Commission Annual Report for 2018 be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Pass. As you know, gentlemen and ladies, at our last meeting, we made an amendment to our bylaws that the elected office would hold the office for two years, and we revised our bylaws. So at this point in time, as the notice went out, election of offices are up, so I think at this point in time, the chair, vice chair, and secretary of office is up for election. So let's take it in that sequence.
If I may, through the chair, I do know that you have one commissioner that is meeting tonight. Again, I have no problem if you want to move forward with election of officers unless you want to give Commissioner Mia an opportunity.
Okay, that's a point of reference. We have, as Jeff said, we do not have a unanimous committee here, so do we want to go forward and do the election of officers tonight, or do we want to postpone until we have a full board with Commissioner Mia and everyone else? Commissioner Willis?
I'm going to suggest that we continue forward because of some things that I know about. We may not have full media, full complements of commissioners in the near future, and I would hate to delay it because of that, and so my feeling is that we should make the elections now. I think we're going to be fair, and I think Commissioner Mia is going to be comfortable with what we do, but I think it would be fair to everyone to move on.
Okay, any other comment?
Has anybody talked to Mia?
I usually have conversation with her, but I did not talk to her about this because she did not come to the meeting Monday, to the council meeting, which I was going to talk to her. I have not talked to her about this, whether she's comfortable or not, but again, as you well know, majority rules. If, I don't know how else we could, maybe we could even page her if necessary, to text her, see if she's comfortable electing, or do we really want to put this off? Because, let me say this, and you may want to tune in, and you too, Terry. Going forward, we may be shorthanded at quite a few of this meeting due to some physical things that may come up on this board. Whoever's sitting in this chair, we may not have a full sovereign board for some time due to some personal things that may come up. I won't divulge those because that's up to them, that person to do that, but if we put this off now, I'm, I'm under the mindset at our next one, we will not have a full board either. At least one or two people will be missing from the next meeting also due to physical, so that's something.
No, I ask because maybe, I don't know if she.
Wants to the office, yeah.
Exactly, so if, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point, because if you cannot hold an office, or you voted for an office, you're not present. So you've got a good point there. Terry, I'm going to defer this to you because I think, you know, my sentiments is going forward, there are, we, there are going to be times that we do not have a full house here, and even at our next election, if we put this off, as Jeff said, to our next meeting to vote, we still may not have a full board.
Right. Well, if I could, our bylaws say the first meeting of the calendar year, you are the chair, you can entertain a motion. I think the only issue would be if it ends up being a 3-3 split, and then I would ask you to ask one more time before we decide to table it. So my recommendation would be, with all due respect to Ms. Mia, she has not indicated to either of us any interest or yourself, and it's unfortunate that she is ill, but we have to, we have to move forward. So I would suggest you take nominations and take a vote, and unless it's a 3-3 deadlock, then we move forward.
I concur, and I think hopefully I gave a good explanation of why we need to move forward without divulging some private information that I should not divulge. Okay, at this point in time, we have the nomination open for chair. Can I get a nomination? Commissioner?
I would nominate Steve Huntington for chair of the Southfield Planning Commission.
Commissioner Huntington has been nominated. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I declare the nomination for chair closed. Commissioner Huntington, you will be the chair for the next two years.
If I may, do you have to have a vote? Still have the vote now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have to go. Okay, I'll just move this thing forward. Okay, seeing that Commissioner Huntington was the only one nominated, we still need to vote. Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Huntington being chair for the next two years? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Huntington, as I said before, you are the chair for the next two years.
Mr. Huntington, as I said before, you are the chair for the next two years, okay? Sorry. Yeah. Okay, sorry, but next, vice chair. Nomination's open for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Willis.
I, I thank you, but I am going to decline. The reason, and I might as well just be, I have some surgical procedures to go through, and so I anticipate missing meetings for a period of time. And so I'm going to decline, but I thank you for the vote of confidence.
Okay, the nomination still? Commissioner Martin?
Like to nominate Mr. Culpepper.
I regretfully decline at this point in time, but thank you. I've held too many offices.
For too long.
I'd like to recommend Commissioner Martin as co-chair.
I would support that. We'll work with, we'll work with you.
I have two things I'm already present about that.
Okay, well, do you regretfully decline?
Regretfully decline, yes.
Okay. Process of elimination. He gonna jump on me. Griff's gonna kill me. Nomination is still open for.
Well, again, you got two other candidates that can either accept or decline before you offer.
Commissioner, Commissioner Griffiths has declined, so I would like to nominate, she gonna shoot me. Doctor, she's, Dr. Dentson, I would like to nominate Dr. Dentson for co-chair, with no, you can't decline.
I decline, please.
Okay, well, then it's back to you if you're willing to serve.
Okay, regretfully, I've declined, well, declined. The reason I decline is, as the older members know, I've been chair and vice chair for the last five, six, seven years, and we need some new blood here. So I will accept the nomination as vice chair, under the condition that once Commissioner Mia comes back, if she has a discussion or conversation with you, Terry, or myself, and she would like to, we'd like to revisit this, I don't know how to do this, but.
Well, you could always, you could, you could wait on the vice chair position.
Excuse me?
You could wait on the vice chair position until next month.
We could?
Yeah, as long as we have a chair.
Yeah, I, yeah, because I need to step aside. So with, with the consent of the commission, I'd like to set aside the election of the vice chair until we have a, but then we still not going to have a full cover. He's going to be gone.
No, I, I understand, but then you can at least ask, ask if she's interested, and if she declines, then you could, you could step up.
Are you comfortable with it? You'll support, other than not here, if Commissioner Mia wants to be vice chair, you're comfortable with it? I'm comfortable with it. So he's the only one that may not be here at our next election. So I would like to propose to the new chair that we postpone the election of the vice chair until we have Commissioner Mia here or a full board, if that's feasible.
That's fair enough, because, yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay with the rest of the commission? Commissioner Martin?
I'd like to make a correction to that.
Okay.
That we postpone to the next meeting, and if we, never mind, I can cancel that.
Yeah, retract his statement, please. Whatever he was going to say, take it out. I will.
I wanted to do a verbal, cancel it.
We'll wait to hear. We'll do, okay, so what we're saying now is, we have the chair, Mr. Huntington, we have a postponement of the vice chair until our next meeting. So now we have, now we have a nomination for secretary that's open.
You just ask if there's any nominations, and if there isn't.
I'm trying to wait, well, the proper way is to wait to see if someone says they'll take it. If not, then I got to go around and solicit again. Commissioner Griffiths, will you act as secretary for the upcoming two years, please?
Okay, yes.
Thank you, sir. Understand, okay, so as of now, Commissioner Griffiths has volunteered to be secretary. May I have a vote? All in favor of Commissioner Griffiths being secretary for the next two years? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. So as of now, going into our next meeting, Commissioner Huntington will chair. We will leave the vice chair open until Commissioner Mia decides, and Commissioner Griffiths will be our secretary. Okay? Good? I know that's not the right way to do it, it's not protocol, it's not robbery, it's order, but that's the only way I could do it at this time, knowing that I cannot and should not be holding any positions for the next four years at least. Okay, if I'm here. Good, yeah. Yeah.
Strike that last statement.
Well, I know, I know. But, oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, but I'm trying hard. Mr. Spence, do we have any? Mr. Lane, so Mr. Crowe?
I guess the only item that I would mention would be that we have no other items for February, no site plans, no special land uses, no rezonings. So really, the rest of this month, we don't really see need for any meetings. So likely, we will be canceling the, the balance of your planning commission meetings for the rest of February. However, we do have this one issue that's kind of hanging out there with regard to the vice chair. We'd be happy to hold the regular meeting at the end of February to, to deal with that issue, or we would move it to, to March.
And we will coordinate with the new chair.
Okay, right, so I will wait until, I think, yeah, to March. I'd like to defer that.
If I, if I could just suggest.
Make that decision, not me?
Yeah, I think March is fine.
If I could, just the ceremonial switching of the chair and passing of the gavel.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say something, too. I want to thank Commissioner Culpepper for a fine job and his dedication to the commission. They did a very, very good job, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Now, with that, staff has no other, no other, no other comments or miscellaneous items.
Any other miscellaneous, any other comments, sir?
Yeah, just one.
Yes, I have a question about, what's it, Paradise?
Mm-hmm.
Did you ever find out anything? Did you contact the building department to see?
The main issue that is, is out there has to do with the lighting, and until they get the lighting issues resolved, we will not issue a C of O for that project.
So is it any other?
There are no other issues other than the lighting. It is strictly the lighting issue, and that was a big one. You know, the lack of lighting on the east side of that property was, was something that was noted by a number of people, and it was a condition of the approval that that be resolved. And until that gets resolved, they will not receive a C of O.
No, I just, I was just wondering, is it any other things? Okay, thank you.
I just, last comment, even though Mr. Spence said we really don't have anything on the docket for February, we do have a busy March, and we have a couple of big projects that have been just recently submitted, or we anticipate to be submitted.